Hi.
Hello.
I'm Mr. D. Sort of your, uh, sitting up for a while now. I'll give you the evening. Just give it right to Jayden soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you gonna do for your birthday?
Um, your business. Just kidding.
Oh, well.
There you go.
You're gonna go out?
Mm-hmm. Ready? Ready. Welcome, everyone, to the Town Council meeting. Please, uh, we'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for invocation. Pastor Mark Dirksen, Jr., Pastor Mark, from, uh, True North Congregation. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you. Either one works. Well, what's power has in prayer? Father, we thank you so much for your mercy and for your love over us as a, as a nation and as a town here in Fountain Hills. Father, I'm asking that you would bless the leadership here, uh, to make good and sound, uh, decisions and judgments, give them wisdom as they go through the things that matter most to our town and the functions that we go through. Thank you for, uh, that, uh, wisdom and leadership that you give to us now. And we pray all this and thank you for it in the name of your son, Yahshua Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schwalm.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino is absent. Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Cantino is feeling a little under the weather, so, uh, keep him in your thoughts. He'll, I'm sure he'll be back real quick. Um, next item, we have, uh, awesome recognition, which is always fun to do. Um, recognizing a couple of folks serving our, our Board of Adjustment, and we have, we get to recognize Angela Strohan, who is here tonight, I know, and, um, Robert Rowe. I don't think Robert's here tonight. Um, but, uh, I'm gonna read you a little something on their background and what they've done, uh, just thus far, uh, to benefit the community, and then I'll ask Angela and Robert if he's here to come forward. Um, Angela Strohan served on our Board of Adjustment from February 1st, 2008 until her appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission on October 7th, 2010. Ms. Strohan was a very valuable member of our Board of Adjustment and is welcome addition to the Town's Planning and Zoning Commission. And, uh, I know Angela can be seen around Town Hall as well, uh, volunteering in, uh, a couple of different, uh, aspects as well. So Angela, thanks a bunch, and, uh, come on forward here in just a second. And Mr. Rowe, Robert Rowe, served on our Board of Adjustment. He's a member there from February 1st, 2009 until February 16th, 2011. Mr. Rowe gave of his time and served us with pride as a board member for the residents of the community. We thank Mr. Rowe for his service to our great town. Angela, would you mind coming forward? And Mr. Rowe, I don't think you're here, but come on forward. Thank you, Deb.
All right, Angela. You have your speech ready?
Right.
Angela, this is a certificate just of our appreciation for you and the numerous roles you've played and what you continue to play in our community. We thank you very much for the significant contributions and the leadership that you've brought to our town and your fresh attitude and your, uh, your great ideas. So we really appreciate what you've done so far. Thank you.
And we'll get Mr. Rowe's certificate to him. Next item on the agenda is presentation of 2011 spring events in Fountain Hills. And the one that helps to make those happen, part of the team, Brian, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, quite a bit's going on this spring. Quite a bit's already happening. Quite a bit more is still going to happen, so we'll just do a quick recap of some of the things that have happened during the months of January and February. Um, the River of Time held their first antique appraisal on January 9th. Uh, the Great Fair Senior Softball Tournament brought teams from around the state to our fields over at Golden Eagle Park, uh, in early February. The Public Safety Appreciation Awareness Day happened on February 5th out at Fountain Park, and that was the second year, consecutive year that this, uh, event's taken place, and it continues to grow with, uh, more equipment and things out there from DPS, MCSO, the local fire departments, and our, our mutual aid partners. Uh, Hashknife Pony Express rode into town on February 10th. Um, another great event that although not listed on their website, we certainly want to keep them coming back year after year and see if we can build on that, that, uh, event a little bit more, 'cause, uh, it's amazing how many people come down to the Avenue of the Fountains to watch them ride in. And always a, a great time at the post office afterwards, talking with them. Uh, the first intergenerational sock hop dance, uh, happened over at the community center. Over 200 people, um, in all age ranges participated in that, so that was kind of exciting. Uh, first time for, uh, that event, and we hope that that continues to grow in the future. And then last weekend, of course, we had the Chamber of Commerce's Great Fair. Some beautiful weather on Friday and Saturday, not so much on Sunday, a little cold, but I think we still saw some great crowds over the, the three days. Um, starting this Sunday in March, we have the Craftsman Concerts in the Park Series. Um, most of you'll remember that back, uh, last Memorial Day when they were riding the Craftsman tractor across the country, they stopped in town and gave us a $5,000 donation and, which was perfect, because that's about what co- the concerts in the park cost annually for, uh, this series during the month of March.
And that's from our local Sears store.
Correct. Our, our local Sears hometown store in Derrick Moore. Um, very, uh, helpful and instrumental in making that happen, so we thank them, and they're gonna have a presence down at the park this weekend and for the next, uh, four weeks, uh, actually, so, um, very exciting. Uh, we do have something new. We're trying some, uh, opening acts this year, some, trying to showcase some local, uh, performers. Uh, our community band is performing the second week. Um, and then just in general, as we've always done, a variety of different bands, cultural, um, and just different genres. Um, so that's always exciting. Um, right now, going on out at Fountain Park, and, and the mayor was, um, participated in the press conference that we had, um, that was broadcast on the web on Tuesday, um, but we have 400-plus disc golfers in the Memorial Championship presented by Discraft, and this is a professional disc golf association sanctioned event. It is one of only nine elite tournaments, um, that go on throughout the year. There are 1,200 sanctioned tournaments, but only nine elite, and this is the first one of the year. So, um, this continues to be a good event, and it's drawing people from across the country. Um, at the press conference, I think we talked with a young lady from Texas, and then the, uh, defending champions from Portland, so some of these people have come to town for the tournament that was held at the end of January and have just stayed over and can you, continue to play our course in the course in Scottsdale. So it's, uh, it's pretty exciting, and then, uh, actually, let me go back to, um, they're gonna wrap up this Saturday with the Memorial Experience, which they started last year for the first time, and that is a vendor showcase, a vendor expo down at the park, followed by a concert, a closing concert, that is produced by, uh, K-Love and Air One Radio. Um, very interesting, they're bringing in an American Idol finalist, Scott McIntyre. I don't watch American Idol, but everybody I've talked to said this guy's amazing, so I think that's gonna be very neat to have him down at the park, um, Saturday night. So that happens at, uh, the expo starts at 1:00, and the concerts start at 6:00. And also found out, um, in meeting with these guys, that Max Hall, the Arizona Cardinals' quarterback, is a disc golf player, and will also be out there to, uh, sign autographs and do some things. So, um, just a, a really cool wrap-up to a, a really cool event. Um, busy weekend, as I said. Um, the Sunset Kiwanis are having the dialysis awareness walk on Sunday morning, 8:00 AM to 11:00, and that is staged at the amphitheater, and that walks around the park, and there's all kinds of different, um, components to that, some educational booths, onsite professionals, refreshments giveaways, so, um, just one more thing happening this weekend. Um, and then Sunday afternoon, again, the concerts in the park. Another one that's, uh, we've gotten back into that years ago, I think the last one was held in 2002, but the Mountain to Fountain, and it was sponsored by the Kiwanis in the past, but now the Bandidos Running Club is bringing it back. Um, it's a, a group of elite runners, too. They have some national champions in, in distance running that are gonna be here, uh, on March 12th, and they're, uh, this race starts at McDowell Mountain Regional Park and finishes up at Fountain Park on Swarro Boulevard right by Teddy Roosevelt. And that is a 15 kilometer, which is 9.3 miles, and I don't really wanna run that far, but these guys seem to love it, and they're figuring that the first person will finish, I think they said in about 45 minutes, so that's pretty quick. Um, but it starts at 8:30, and they, there is a two-hour time limit, so they will be down at Fountain Park by 10:30 and be done. And, uh, they wanted to have a party afterwards, so we helped put them together with our Amvets, VFW, Noon Kiwanis, to put together a little party in the park, and the party is not only for the runners and their families, but it's open to the entire community. They wanted to have everybody come down and just have a good time. Um, there's gonna be, uh, family activities, they're, uh, the Bandidos are coordinating some running races for kids in the park. They're giving out medals, and we're also gonna have some live music and just some other kids' activities, and just a good day in the park. Um, hopefully some beautiful weather, and people will come down and enjoy it. Um, we see this more as a community activity than, but also an extension of the Mountain to Fountain. Saint Patrick's Day is still happening, despite what everybody might have heard. Um, we had always planned to do, continue to dye the fountain green at noon on Saint Patrick's Day, which is a tradition that goes back to the 80s, but again, with the help of the Amvets and the VFW, they're gonna be sponsoring a small event down in the park. Um, we are gonna have a bagpipe at noon when the fountain goes green, we are gonna have some live music, and we are gonna have a small beer garden and some corned beef and cabbage, of course, so anyone who doesn't wanna stay down at the park, we still encourage them to go and visit all the different restaurants that participate and have some cool, uh, Saint Patrick's Day specials, but we anticipate quite a few people coming to town. Um, this event begins at 10:00, and as we know, it gets really, really crowded between 11:00 and 1:00 at Fountain Park when that fountain goes green. So, um, again, it's not gone, it's just a little bit smaller, and we'll continue to build this back up. Um, another great event that's coming, the Thunderbird Artist Fine Art and Wine Affair, another three-day art festival. This will close, uh, the north part of Avenue of the Fountains, the, uh, westbound lane, and that's for, uh, three days, the 18th, 19th, and 20th of this month. Um, actually, it's, um, they are going to be setting up on Saint Patrick's Day, but at the end of the day, so we still are gonna have our farmer's market and art on the avenue and things going on, so Saint Patrick's Day is going to be very busy around the park and then on the avenue. Um, another event that's, in its second year, that, uh, went through the special event process is the American Legion's Motorcycle Ride-In. Um, this is a motorcycle show that has different categories for prizes, I think nine different categories, and that's open to the public down at the American Legion, and all their proceeds benefit different charities. Um, the 20th Annual El Tour de Mesa. These people, we don't actually see them in town, but hopefully there's, they're passing along on Shea Boulevard. They are, um, stopping and, or maybe not stopping, but knowing that, hey, we wanna come back and see what's going on in town, um, 'cause it's such a beautiful part of the, the ride. Um, they'll be going through on April 2nd, 8:15 to 9:15 in the morning, and all their proceeds also benefit, um, charities, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And later that morning, approximately 2,000 motorcycles, as part of the Arizona Bike Week, will be leaving, uh, Chester's Harley-Davidson down in Mesa, and will be making their trek up to, uh, Westworld in Scottsdale. Again, another benefit, uh, for Arizona Special Olympics. Then we get into some more kid-friendly things. On Saturday, April 2nd, in the evening, down at Fountain Park, we have the Disney's Toy Story III, which, um, the nice thing about this is working with, uh, our Parks and Recreation Commissioner Natalie Varela. She manages to get sponsors, even in the leanest of times, to cover the cost of the, uh, moving the park program, so we're really thankful that this event continues to pay for itself through sponsorships. And then Sunday, April 3rd, working with ADOG, they have the Paws Around the Fountain Adopt-a-Thon, and I believe the last couple of years, uh, between, over the last two years, probably adopted upwards of 200 animals, uh, down at Fountain Park, so, um, very exciting event. I'm gonna stay away, I already have six animals, uh, and I do not need any more, but, uh, I think it is great, and it's a, it's good to, uh, to have this event down there. And the Egg Extravaganza, which the mayor highlighted in his State of the Town address. Um, it is one of the, um, one of our, our, the quickest event, let's just say that. Um, it takes a lot of time in prepar- preparation, but 15,000 stuffed plastic eggs, inflatable bouncers, Kiwanis pancake breakfast, Extravaganza wouldn't be the same without Hoppy the Bunny and Clucky the Chicken joined us last year, so, um, we thank the Goianos for their ongoing sponsorship of this, uh, program. And new to Fountain Park in April this year, end of April, will be the Relay for Life. I think a lot of people remember when it used to be held over at the high school. They were looking for a little bit more visibility. Um, last year, they came to us, and we said, you know, why don't you plan for another year, and, and they did, and I think they've got some good momentum going. And so down at Fountain Park, on the evening of April 30th to May 1st, we will see the first Relay for Life down at Fountain Park, an overnight event where they walk and walk and walk, so, and that benefits American Cancer Society, so excited about that one coming. And just to wrap it up, um, these are all part of our strategic plan. We talk about, um, the strategic value related to recreational opportunities and amenities offer a wide range of cost-effective and accessible programs and services. We think that these events help do that and support local organizations in providing affordable quality programs to promote recreational sports, fitness, wellness programs. And we're doing that with our, our nonprofit partners, as well as some of the, uh, the PDGA and the Bandidos Running Club, and support community events and activities that create opportunities to build community and neighborhood identity, and again, I think they all do that, so, um, we're pretty excited about all the things that are happening. You've considered some of these on previous agendas, you have a few more on here for tonight, and you'll probably have a few more here in the next couple of months, but, uh, there is a lot happening, and we appreciate the Town Council's support in, uh, helping to make these activities happen. Don't take any questions.
Thanks a bunch, Brian. Covered a lot of things that have happened already and a lot of things coming up. Any questions from council on the presentation or comments? Brian, the, um, what stands out is all these organizations that are doing these events, and that's, I don't know if that's unique of Fountain Hills, but it's certainly terrific. And then you certainly help them, and the staff helps them through the process and facilitates these events and, and, you know, supports them to some extent as well on those days when they happen. But the, um, costs and the efforts are primarily of these organizations that put these together, including the Bandidos now, um, which is just great. I think that it's terrific. How, how have you seen that progressing with us, uh, with our budget moving more to a facilitory position?
Um, Mayor, council members, I think it's, I think it's been great. I think people realize that the, the Town's Council and our, the Town's budget is very tight, and they still wanna see things happen, and I think, um, the staff support is really the most important part that a lot of people are looking for when we, we, uh, talk with them, is, you know, hey, we don't, we don't do these things, can you point us in the right direction? And I think we've been able to do that. Um, in some cases, we might support them a little bit with some funds, but for the most part, they're, you know, we say, hey, you know, we might be able to do this this year, but in the future, you know, we're really looking for this event to become self-sustaining. So, again, the staff support, I think, is always gonna be there. I think we always wanna help facilitate through the, uh, the application process and even through the event to make sure it's successful, because if, if it's successful for the nonprofit group or the, the group that's coordinating it, then it's successful for the town, and I think it makes us look good, um, as a whole, as a community. So, um, it's been exciting, and, and it's definitely different. You don't, I think other towns are probably starting to do similar things, but I think we've kinda led the way as far as what I've heard with some of my colleagues in the, in the profession, so doing some neat things.
Yeah, that's it, seems like, and the, like you mentioned, the organizations that are doing them are hopefully raising some funds as far as, you know, vending and that sort of thing, and those benef- those dollars typically go right back into the community and the efforts that they support, so it's really, I think, very, very positive, and I think the whole staff or the support that you give in helping folks get through the process simply and limiting the forms and, and those types of things, I think all help to make things happen. And I know that disc golf, it's happening now, the professional, the Professional Disc Golf Association here, and at Fountain Park, and I don't know how many years, 30 years we've had a, you know, golf thing.
Yeah, 20 years.
20-plus years. It's, and now this sport is really exploding, um, I guess worldwide, this professional disc golf, which is really something, if you haven't seen it, come down to Fountain Park, it started today, and it will go through, and they'll have the actual championship final round on Saturday morning, where all the professionals will be here, which is, it's just a lot of fun. They've got the cameras out there, and, and then I have to mention the people that walk, the, our residents here primarily, they're, I have got great feedback from the professional disc golfers that, you know, they now understand the sport, they know why they're there, that they're, they're really working well together, even though it takes up the entire park, walkers are still welcome, and they have a little path, a couple of diversions, but it's, seems to be working very well, which is a win-win as well. And I know the businesses love the additional, you know, 1,000, 2,000 people here in town for, for that. Yes. Yes, uh, Tom Andrew Davis.
Mayor and council, just to show that, uh, community services isn't the only department that'll pull off an event, the Administration Department is actually also, uh, presenting something very important a week from, uh, tonight, and that is the first Freedom Series, uh, presentation. The Freedom Series will feature two speakers, uh, who are just simply exceptional Americans who have, uh, really exemplify, uh, what it means to be an American. It can, we're, uh, very much expecting that they can express, uh, and, and help us to appreciate a little bit more of what it means to be an American. These are two gentlemen who were born outside of this country, but yet made their way to this country and served this country, and, and they're, uh, great examples, I think, and their stories are extremely intriguing. And so a week from tonight at 6:30 at the community center, I want to invite everybody to be in attendance for that very special event. VFW will, uh, be providing the color guard there, and, uh, I think some recorded music, and, uh, it will be just a wonderful event for the whole family. So mark that on your calendars.
Good. Good addition. And, and I mentioned staff, obviously, there's, the park staff is doing tremendous job in streets, and really, that probably every employee here at Town Hall and volunteer touches these events, so they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments related to all these cool events this spring?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Brian. Good presentation. All right, move now to call to the public. Any speaker cards tonight?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Move to the consent agenda. Um, I'll go through these items, and then we'll make, uh, we'll actually go through each item and look for a motion in a second on the, at the end of them. The first item is consideration of approving the Town Council meeting minutes from February 17th, 2011. Item two, well, we're gonna go to the end, sorry. I, that was my fault, Dennis. Um, item two, consideration of special event liquor license application submitted by Robert Schmidt, um, for representing American Legion Post 58 for the purpose of fundraiser scheduled on Thursday, March 17th, 2011. Consider, item three, consideration of special end application submitted by Perimeter Bicycle Association America, Inc., for the El Tour de Mesa, scheduled April 2nd, 2011, traveling through Fountain Hills along Shea Boulevard, approximately 8:15, 9:15 AM. Item four, consideration of special event application submitted by Special Olympics Arizona for this Chester's Torch Ride, uh, on April 2nd, 2011, traveling through Fountain Hills along Shea Boulevard from approximately 10:45 to 12:30 PM. And item five, consideration of special event application for the Mountain to Fountain Post Race Party in the park, sponsored by the Town of Fountain Hills, Amvets, VFW, and Noon Kiwanis, to be held March 12th, 2011, in Fountain Park. Item six, consideration of special event liquor license application submitted by Sam Coffey, Sons of Amvets Squadron 7, for the purpose of a fundraiser in conjunction with the Mountain Fountain Post Race Party in the park. Item number seven, consideration of special event application for the Saint Patrick's Day Celebration, sponsored by the Fountain, Town of Fountain Hills, Amvets, and VFW, to be held March 17th, 2011, and located in Fountain Park. Item eight, consideration of special event liquor license application submitted by Sam Coffey, Sons of Amvets Squadron 7, for the purpose of a fundraiser in conjunction with the Saint Patrick's Day Celebration. And item nine, consideration of approving a piece of donated art for public display in the courtyard area next to the library entitled "The Corn Dancer." Can I get a motion on the consent agenda? So move. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Schwalm?
Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero?
Great, thank you very much. Move on to the regular agenda. Item 10, discussion with possible direction of staff regarding the Town's naming policy, which is Resolution 2006 dash 08, and, um, some members of council thought this is a good item to talk about, and we don't have a staff report on this item, but we can maybe get some staff input, and, um, I'll open it up for discussion regarding, regarding the naming policy. Anybody wanna take their first stab at this? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was trying to remember exactly how the policy itself came to be on the agenda, and I think it was, it came on a discussion on the Centennial Circle, and with that discussion came the discussion about Cotillo Plaza and, and that, so I think it, I don't know whose suggestion it was to look at the policy, um, as a whole, and I don't really have much to say about the policy itself. My main thing was just kind of reminding what had happened back in 1996 that occurred before the policy was in place.
Good. Well, would you mind, would you mind going over that a little bit more?
Sure. And that's why I wanted to make sure that the council had this. Um, they're just little excerpts from the minutes, and basically it happened over, um, uh, three, three council meetings, and, um, let's see. June, let me get back to the front. On June 6th, um, when the new council was seated, Vice Mayor Lawrence was appointed to chair a recognition committee to acknowledge the Town's first mayor, John Cotillo. So he put together a committee, and they met, and they came up with some suggestions that were discussed at the June 20th. And basically, it was for a short-term recognition and for something more long-term. And then they voted on the July 11th meeting to, um, designate the, the footprint of what would become the Community Center Plaza, which basically is all the town, uh, property, and designate that as Cotillo Plaza or Cotillo whatever it would end up to be. Um, and like I said, this took place in 1996, and it was basically when the property got developed, and now we know it has been developed, and, and I think why this is coming back up is because of the Centennial Circle, and that it might be appropriate to, to readdress this at that time, at this time.
Good, thanks. That is very helpful. Thank you very much. Councilmember Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question about the, the, uh, the resolution, which was, uh, saying, you know, laying out, Andrew, the, um, the reasons of what, I mean, the, speak English here. The, I can tell you're not listening.
I think he's pulling it up.
Yeah. Basically, can we, um, since, since there are minutes here that say that there was that intention for that plaza to be named after our first mayor, do we have to change the ordinances as they are, and I'm okay if we're, if we're looking at that, too? But is that, does that have to happen in order for us to move forward with, with this action? I don't know which predated it. They're both in 2006, I think.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, I think that the, um, the only official naming policy we have is the one that's in the resolution, and it would make sense in, in terms of formalizing the whole thing, if you want to, to move forward with that, to just treat it all in one action together. If you were gonna name the plaza, you could amend the policy to allow for that and, and make whatever tweaks you want to at the time. I, I know that there's, there's also another discussion about naming that may impact the number, the amount of times someone's been deceased that we may be talking about in the future as well, so it might be a good time to just wrap all that together, so that the official resolution that was adopted in 90, or 2006?
Six, I think, yeah.
Yep. So that that's cleared up, so everybody knows what the policy is going forward, so there's no, we won't have to go back and, and dig it, dig through the old minutes again and figure out what everybody's done. We'll have a resolution that just says it, and we can spell it out in all the recitals on, here's what was originally intended, here's what the, the policy was adopted, here's what we intend by the, the new policy, and then just wrap it all in.
I mean, the only reason I ask is if there's trepidation about making a wholesale change in that, just if people are nervous about the future about doing something like that, I would like to know if it would be possible then to at least to go ahead with what was obviously the intention of this former council, and, and I think something that we'd like to try to do, even if we weren't able to change, so that's why I was just asking if it's even possible.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickey, it's certainly possible, and, and then the council's intent back in, in 96, um, was relating to the entire 15 acres, so I think you have a lot of flexibility on where you, you go on that 15 acres, and clearly what is referred to now in, in the Centennial Circle area is within that original footprint, so you have whatever flexibility you want. I think it's just important that if you're going to, to make a change for other purposes as well, that we just clean it all up so that there's not a question in the future.
Councilmember Hanson?
If something was done, like Andrew said, with the entire 15 acre, 13 acre, the, the
The only reason I ask is if there's trepidation about making a wholesale change in that, just if people are nervous about the future about doing something like that, I would like to know if it would be possible then to at least to go ahead with what was obviously the intention of this former council, and I think something that we'd like to try to do even if we weren't able to change. So that's why I was just asking if it's even possible.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickie, it's certainly possible, and then the council's intent back in 96 was relating to the entire 15 acres, so I think you have a lot of flexibility on where you go on that 15 acres. And clearly, what is referred to now in the Centennial Circle area is within that original footprint, so you have whatever flexibility you want. I think it's just important that if you're going to make a change for other purposes as well, that we just clean it all up so that there's not a question in the future.
Councilmember Hanson?
If something was done, like Andrew said, with the entire 15 acre, 13 acre, the whole footprint, then it would still leave the possibility for various components within that area to be, yet name something else, just like the Centennial Circle within the plaza. So, I mean, it would leave kind of a broad possibility for things that could be done in the future. And would it be possible to just maybe apart from the policy, be able to ratify the action that was taken place by the council in 1996? And just, you know, look at it almost as a grandfather-type thing, separate from the policy?
I think so. Especially because that action just never really carried forward into something. The council made a decision to take the action and just never finished off with an actual, you know, sign or location fix. So I think it's perfectly appropriate to address that one separately. I think there are other things that people are discussing now in terms of naming streets or other things that might be impacted by the way the policy is now too, so it might be a good idea.
So maybe that could be a totally separate thing then. And, well, and we didn't even have this property in 1996.
Right, yeah. And they weren't built for years after that. Yeah, Councilmember LaChee?
Mayor, if I may, address the town attorney. I'm certainly not opposed to what I'm hearing from peer council members here. I know that that particular policy and the minutes that were shared with us predated the resolution. And the resolution in 2000, Resolution 2006-08, Section 2, facility naming, clearly indicates that one must be deceased before something can be named after them. So my thinking is, and that's why I'm addressing town attorney, wouldn't it not make sense to amend the resolution that would enable us then to move forward on this? Because the names that I've heard tossed around are in fact living, and they are not deceased. And in that that policy, the resolution followed the council action, it would seem to me by default that the resolution would be the policy that's in place. And once again, from a legal perspective, I don't know the answer to the question, I would simply suggest if the council felt comfortable moving in that direction, that we address the resolution and amend it and remove deceased, and/or put other criteria in there for the situation we're talking about, which is not a building or a facility. Thank you, Mayor.
Andrew, any comments on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember LaChee, I think that what we're talking about are two distinctive issues. One is a prior action that preceded the council's direction in the council naming policy as adopted in '06, but I do think it's inappropriate to address it at the same time to just clean it all up. I don't think that one needs to wait for the other one, but I think we can have them both done concurrently to make it all flow out at the same time, because it seems to be this is certainly not something that's controversial, as far as I can tell, and we should be, yeah, exactly. We just never know, but I think that we can pretty easily wrap all this together in, you know, a resolution that ratifies a prior act, makes whatever changes you all want to make to this, and then clears it up so someone picking up that resolution nine years from now, 10 years from now, will see exactly what the intent was.
Mayor, and that's what I'm suggesting, just then concurrently, for the reason you just stated, that someone would go back and look at the resolution, which in fact is the policy, and say, you know, what's up with that? And I would feel comfortable moving concurrently. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Elkie?
One of the suggestions I'd have too is just being a little more definitive as far as what a facility is, the place, because I think what we're talking about here is a place as opposed to a facility itself, and there appears to be two different criteria for naming a facility. The person has to be deceased two years, whereas my reading of the streets, there's no criteria in there as far as how long the person has to be deceased, so you can actually name it immediately. So we should probably have some consistency, or even just leave it up to the council at the time to make a decision, although we can, you know, put in some basic guidelines, but I think it should be a case-by-case basis.
Councilmember Hanson?
I'd like to see us make it clear, though, that what we might do about the action the council took in 1996 is not the cause for the revision.
Yes.
I think that could lead maybe to some heartburn for some people, you know, that we're changing this policy to simply fit something that happened even before the policy. And that's why I'd like to kind of make sure that they keep their own identities separate.
Good, that's a good point. All right, anything else on this item? Councilmember Dickie?
So we'll just expect to see some suggested language for future time, but would we be able to take any action on the Cotillo Plaza tonight, or should we wait on that too? If we keep it separate?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Dickie, the council's action prior on Cotillo Plaza is already, you know, 14, 15 years old, so that action's already been taken. You know, if, the directive on where to go with all of that is something we should probably have, you know, some staff input, some suggestions, so at least get some specific direction from you all on where you would like something and what type of recognition. I think those are some things that are still up in the air.
Okay.
Councilmember Hanson?
Maybe we could go more in a direction to, since there are questions, and we don't maybe even want it to be Cotillo Plaza, maybe it's Cotillo Civic, I don't know. That could take, you know, more discussion. But maybe just asking staff to address what the various issues would be, so that when we do act on it, it's clean and defined, and we know for sure what it is. You know, so the action now could be just to initiate the action to make this happen.
Good, and then as far as points related to the actual policy, the actual resolution?
Would that work, you mean?
Is that enough? That's, you probably need more feedback from council, I think, in order to come forward, or do you have enough?
We have a couple of the items that we can definitely address. Some, if anyone wants to provide any more feedback on other things that they think are vague or would like to be changed, or otherwise, we can certainly propose language on those as well.
Okay, I think, like was mentioned, let's make sure it's clear, so it doesn't look like we're, it's been mentioned a couple times, doing one thing just because of one, something from the past, if that's not what we're doing here. As you mentioned, it's already been done, that action of the council at that time, we just haven't really memorialized it.
We just want to ratify it.
Yeah, we want to ratify it and do it right. Councilmember Elkie?
Just so I'm clear, when the previous council had voted to name it Cotillo Plaza, did they have an idea what it was, where it was, and what they were designating it as? I mean, I'm just not real clear on that, on what the location was that they were specifically referring to. And if, because if it's already been done, then, you know, there's nothing that we have to per se ratify, we just need to implement it. If it's already been voted on, there's nothing additional we need to do. So if it's absolutely clear as to what those council members were referring to, then...
The 13-acre footprint.
Okay, so the 13-acre footprint being the Centennial Circle?
The entire Civic.
Oh, the entire Civic Plaza, okay.
So what we have before us potentially is just make sure we have all our, everything, all our ducks in a row, but then probably more importantly is to do what we do best and have a, celebrate it at some point in a...
An event.
In an event. Brian?
Another thing.
But, so we don't need a motion tonight, or you've got enough feedback from us, and any other comments on this item? Was there a speaker card on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Anything else, council? Good, thank you very much. Item 11, consideration of authorizing the transfer of appropriation from the Election Expenditure Line item with the Town Clerk Division to the Development Services and Community Services Department's line item in the amount of $55,150 to repair town recreation facilities and civic center mechanical equipment. Julie, how are you?
Fine, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This line item, this request is to transfer funds out of the town clerk's budget, and if I can just kind of go back and give a little bit of a historical perspective on this, last year, about a year ago from now, when we were putting together the 10-11 budget, we included in the budget a contingency line item of about $213,000. Why we did that was we were not sure how the economy was going to be in this year that we're in right now, and we wanted to be able to add some flexibility in the event that the revenues didn't come in as we anticipated. And so, there was in, there is in this year's budget that contingency line item. When the, it appeared that we may need an election for the trash hauling issue, we took, we transferred money from the contingency to the town clerk's budget to allow for that election, the election cost, you know, assuming that we had, we were going to have an election. Since then, we do not have to have an election, and what we want to do is rather than put the money or the funds back in the contingency line item, because now we're six months into the year, and we're not so concerned about revenues, they appear to be coming in just as we budgeted, rather than put it back in the contingency line item, that we were hoping to be able to use it for some much-needed maintenance and repair items that are not in next year's budget, they're obviously not in this year's budget, but if we have the $55,000 set aside and are not using it, hopefully, we could use it for these repairs. So that's basically, you know, what we're asking to transfer the money back, either we transfer it back to the contingency line item, or we transfer it into these department requests for the maintenance. Both department directors are here to answer any questions on the specific projects, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions from the council.
Good, I'm sure we'll have some. Thank you very much. Any one on the public on this item?
Yes, Mayor, Claire Keyworth?
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Keyworth.
Thank you. I'm Claire Keyworth, Mayor, councilmembers. I am representing 115 members of the pickleball club here in Fountain Hills, a club that was started about three years ago, and we have grown by leaps and bounds. Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States, and we are very fortunate to have had the partnership with both the high school as well as Parks and Rec. We wouldn't be where we are today without them. One of the concerns that we have, of course, is looking at the courts that are on high school property that have been so graciously granted to us for use, is that these courts are in such disrepair. There are a lot of cracks, rough surface areas, and this has resulted in several of our members falling. And where we have a population of over 50, mostly, even though it is an intergenerational sport, falling is not the greatest thing that you want to have happen to your club members. So I would ask that council certainly consider appropriating the transfer of funds, greatly appreciate it. I think that's about all I have to say. We really, really have grown, and I'm telling you that we have populations coming from Chandler, Tempe, Paradise Valley, as well as Mesa. The reason for that is there are only two public courts in Maricopa County, and we're one of them. So we're seeing a lot of snowbirds in addition to a lot of people right here in town. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Keyworth. Good, all right. Council, any questions for Julie? Let's go first. Councilmember LaChee?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to return the $55,150 to the contingency fund for future consideration of individual proposed expenditures, which include repair of town recreation facilities and the civic center mechanical equipment.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion. The, I think, Councilmember LaChee, now, I think it's, as you're so good at, is the process, and I think that's not, is also an option that was presented by staff as well as to return it there, and then potentially bring it forward for further consideration, but I respect the process step, and potentially, that's perhaps the best way to go, and we'll have a similar presentation soon again, perhaps. Any other discussion on the item? Councilmember LaChee?
Reading the staff report, I'm certainly not opposed to any of the expenditures as they're lumped. I would like to see them come forward individually, and I certainly do appreciate the need at the pickleball court as well as the tennis courts. It's just, as the mayor said, it's just kind of a process, process issue. And speaking of pickleball, it's just amazing how that's grown. I drove by there the other evening, and I almost, I just felt like stopping just to watch you folks. It was just, it's just overwhelming how many people are out there, and I remember when it was first recommended by the Parks and Recs Department as kind of a vision, so kudos to you and your group, and please do not interpret this as a lack of support, it's just a matter of process that I'm proposing. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Councilmember Dickie?
I just have a question about the school district's part in helping to repair the pickleball, and I will ask if there's any time constraint or anything on that.
Mayor, as member of the council, that would be a question for Mark Mayer. He worked with the school district on that.
Thank you.
Mayor Schlum, Councilwoman Dickie, I apologize, I'm not sure. When I approached the Assistant Superintendent for the district, Mr. Leedy, he indicated that because it was town-owned or town-shared, school district facilities, that they would be in position to pay half of the cost. I assume it's this current fiscal year, but I did not specifically ask that question. I can certainly clarify that.
Thank you, Mark. Mayor, I will assume that it'll be okay if we put this off for another meeting or so, then it'll still be in this fiscal year. Thank you.
All right, good, thank you very much. Any other discussion? Councilmember Elkie?
Not sure if it's going to be Mark or Paul, but just some questions with respect to the air conditioning units and the pumps. Paul, I'm curious, I did certainly read the report, can you elaborate a little bit as far as, I understand we're operating on a secondary pump for the community center, and I just want to, you know, certainly something that needs to be taken care of before the summer, can you elaborate a little bit?
Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Elkie, the physical plant does serve all the buildings of the community center. It is the library, the library museum, the community center, and the Town Hall. The way the physical plant works is that water comes down cooling towers, and then there are two pumps that pump them to chillers. Those two pumps are the 10 horsepower and the 7.5 horsepower. Those pumps are leaking, and they are three years past their anticipated useful life. If one of those pumps should happen to fail, then one of the chillers that they pump the water to goes down, and then you can't air-condition the complex. Once it gets to about 90 to 95 degrees in the summer, you need both chillers working. The chillers then cool the water further, and then there are two 40 horsepower pumps that pump it to the various buildings. The main pump is down, the bearings were grinding, so that is taken out of service, and we're operating on the backup pump. So if that pump should fail, then no chilled water would get to any of the buildings. So we want to replace that primary pump.
Paul, I mean, certainly unless the pump goes down tomorrow, this is something that can wait perhaps to the next regular scheduled meeting?
Oh, definitely.
Okay, okay, excellent.
Very good. Councilmember Hanson?
Along those same lines, would it be appropriate to request that these items be on the next agenda? Since we've got the report already, it would just be a matter of...
Yep, very good.
And then just a quick one for Julie?
All right, thank you.
Julie, like for the physical plant equipment, and I know we've got that vehicle replacement and equipment replacement fund thing set up now, would this kind of equipment be included in that as well?
Mayor Schlum, members of the council, I'm not so sure that the maintenance equipment, I'm not sure if the air conditioning equipment is. Just a second. Stretch, do you know? Sorry, I have to refer to facilities, because I'm not sure. Mary put that together, and I haven't looked at all the details yet.
Stretch, how are you?
Mayor, Councilman Hanson, the, from what I understand, the fund that you're talking about is for equipment that costs $10,000 and more, from what I understood when Mary Martin was here. And each piece of equipment we have right now is less than $10,000. If we group all the equipment together, then it's over $10,000. But the way I understood it, from what Mary said, it's each piece of equipment.
So we wouldn't look at the plant as a whole, then?
Not necessarily, because there's, it's all parts. There's many pieces in the plant, unless the council wants to designate the plant as one piece of equipment.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, members of the council, I can get back to you on that. I'll double-check to see what's in there.
I just wondered if we...
That's a good question.
Can you use a way, it seems to kind of...
Yes, good question.
Good. All right, we have a motion, a second, and discussion, any further discussion on the motion? All right, motion is to put it back into con... All right, motion is to put it back into contingency and then bring discussion on bringing the items back at our next meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed?
Mayor Six Zero?
Thank you. Item 12, council discussion direction of the town manager, any items to discuss with us tonight?
Mayor, council, we've enjoyed a very successful last few weeks of the Citizens Academy, it'll be culminating next Wednesday, want to congratulate and thank Brian Hughes and his staff, Mark, and those in community service that have made this possible, especially those citizens that have taken the time to get to know us a little bit better. We started with about 14 individuals and only had four drop out, so we ended with 10, which is a really high success rate, and if they can endure my discourse for three hours, then that, we should have given them a certificate right there. But we'll wrap it up next Wednesday with a discussion of elected officials, legal, and, yes, of course, and clerk, yes, and the clerk, of course, the most, we saved the most important for last, and I'm just so pleased that we've been able to present this and hope to be able to do that again next year. We're certainly going to program that in for next year and try to pull it off again about the same time of year, with that, so that's all I have.
Good, Councilmember Elke?
Mayor, as I understand, there's a very important day coming up in a couple days, and it hasn't been, it hasn't been recognized just yet, and I think it's very important that the public recognizes and that perhaps our very own Councilmember Hanson could sing you happy birthday, as your birthday is on the fifth.
Not worthy, I'm not worthy, Councilmember, boy, she's too good.
Certainly wish you a happy birthday.
I would love to, I would love to hear Councilmember Hanson sing, she is such a good voice.
Where's the mic?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Elke, birthday time on Saturday, appreciate it.
Twenty-nine?
Yep, twenty-nine, good guess, good guess. And summary council request and report to recent activities, you kind of gave the report, we talked about tonight these items, both these items 10-11 coming back to us in different various forms, so...
Different various forms, yes.
Yep, very good, look now for a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much.